Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Monday, December 14th, 2015 Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening, I appreciate it. Staff, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, do you have, does anyone have any addition to this evening's agenda? None from commissioners? Staff, do we have any additions to the agenda?
No, no changes.
With no changes, I would note that for those of you that are in the audience, the agenda is provided in the lobby and for those watching from home, they can pull up the this evening's posted agenda on the website at burnsville.org. With that, I would stand for a motion for adoption of this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Second item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from the November 9th, 2015 Planning Commission. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the posted minutes from the November 9th meeting? None? Staff, do you have any changes?
No changes.
Hearing no changes, I would also entertain a motion for the adoption of the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a, I have a motion by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. That does bring us to the third item on this evening's agenda, and that is a public hearing. The public hearing is for GHMM Properties LLC, an application for a concept and development stage planned unit development, PUD, for a new landscape business with outdoor storage and rezoning from I-1 Industrial Park to I-2 Planned Unit Development for land located southeast intersection of Cliff Road West and River Ridge Boulevard. Ms. Garros will be presenting this evening. Thank you, Ms. Garros. You have our undivided attention.
All right. Well, it's a great project to go through with the Planning Commission and the public this evening. It's a project that has, we've been very involved with the applicant at the property that the city has owned and tried to sell for many, many years, and we finally do have an individual who's closed and purchased the property and is looking for approvals in order to develop the site. The applicant is here this evening, Chris Boats, and he has a landscape business. They are, as the applicant, coming in as GH Minnesota Properties LLC, and they are looking for concept and development stage planned unit development approval for a landscape business and to allow an outdoor storage lot, and also requesting a rezoning of the property from Industrial Park to Industrial Park Planned Unit Development. The property itself has an address of 12201 River Ridge Boulevard, but because no one knows where that is, because it hasn't been developed, we just described the property as southeast of Cliff Road and River Ridge Boulevard. The property is identified on your screen by the striped area. The property contains 4.46 acres. On the pictometry, this is the subject site. It borders Cliff Road to the north, River Ridge Boulevard to the west, and the city's property is directly to the south. We've got kind of the outdoor storage area directly south of the site in this location. This is the ABLE building where the fire department and police department hold training exercises, and then further to the south is the city's water treatment plant. Part of the application does call for rezoning of the property as indicated above in this circled area. This is where we've got this one industrial park piece of land that is being requested to be rezoned to I-1 and PUD. As you see, the adjacent property to the east is zoned general industry, I-2, and then the properties to the south and west are zoned B-3, some in planned unit development, and we've got the Walmart that exists to the west and a vacant lot. And then directly north of the site is Cliff Fan Park, which is a park that is owned by the city of Burnsville. The planned unit development that is being requested is to allow for several different things to occur on the property. One is to allow more than one building on a lot. The applicant is proposing ultimately through development of a phased project to have two buildings on the lot. That does require either a conditional use permit or PUD, so they are proposing this through a planned unit development. They propose to have outdoor storage on part of the property. This again is an allowed use, provided there is a conditional use permit or planned unit development. So in this case, we're looking at a planned unit development. PUD is also requested to allow the percentage of metal panel siding to exceed the 25% standard. There is also a retaining wall that's proposed on the south side of the property, that's quite a substantial wall, 18 feet at its highest point, a little bit above that, and when we have retaining walls over eight feet that are proposed inside or rear yards, that again requires a processing of a conditional use permit, or in this case, planned unit development. And the last item where PUD is requested is the property does have poor soils, so they are requesting planned unit development approval to do temporary soil remediation and stockpiling for a period of 10 years. This overhead just gives you an idea, I think a little bit better picture of what the city's, for lack of a better term, boneyard consists of. Pretty much outdoor storage. There's no fencing on this property. It has been screened by the existing trees, and it's also on the slope area, there's a pretty good hillside that basically moves down towards Cliff Road as being the lowest elevation. And then this is just a view of the city's ABLE training site. The property itself is very constrained. What I wanted to show you on this picture, this are, these are the existing conditions on the property, and when I was talking about slope areas, there are areas of steep slope pretty much along the southern property line. The city's property is about 20 feet in elevation taller than the subject site. The subject site actually has, I believe, over 30 feet of elevation, and it's with its high point here at the southeast corner, down to the low point in this area of the site on by Cliff Road. So we're basically dealing with a hill. In addition to that, the site is pretty much fully wooded. The trees that are on site are lower classification type trees, with the exception of nine or 10 trees, they're all cottonwood or box elder trees, and the other trees are all elm. So it's, it's a mix of kind of growth that's just occurred over time, nothing that has been planted. In addition to that, there is a small wetland, and that's this blue area in this location here, that's a remnant of a larger wetland that used to exist before Cliff Road was put in by the county. So we have a small wetland here, and then the topography of the site is, as I indicated, is sloping from south to north. In addition to the physical constraints on the property, we do have existing encumbrances that make this a very difficult site to develop. This property, when it was subdivided by the city back in 2010, 2011, really the, the site was chosen, or the lot line was created, kind of based on what the city's needs were for its own outdoor storage area and this ABLE training building. The site itself does meet the lot area and with standards for the I-1 zoning district, but as you can see, it's a very long, relatively narrow lot, and even at the time that it was plotted, staff anticipated that any future development would likely need to come in for variances or planned unit development in order to be able to construct on the site due to both the physical and, and the, the long and narrow aspect of the property. There are three public utilities that run north-south in this lot. There's a city water line, a city sewer line, and a city storm sewer line that are located approximately this area of the property. There is a city fiber line, which was buried in this part of the property. Then there are also overhead utilities. This is an overhead power line in this location. There are also overhead power lines in the right-of-way along Cliff Road. So what this does is when you take a look at this, the wetland, the slopes, you have a very restricted building area that's available. If nothing is changed, you've got these three components or pieces of the property that are developable, and what the applicant is doing is trying to make the best use for full development of the property, and that is where we get into the PUD and some of the deviations. The project includes development of a two-phased project. The first phase really encompasses everything to the eastern edge of their proposed storage lot, all the way over to River Ridge Boulevard. It includes a construction of an 8,000-square-foot office warehouse building in this location. There is a 32-stall parking lot to the south of that building, and then the outdoor storage is really the central part of the site, and we'll talk about that in a little bit further detail. Phase two for the project is to allow for future expansion for the applicant's business. They are a company that provides lawn service, maintenance, lawn maintenance service, snowplowing, et cetera, and they do operate all over the Twin Cities, and they were looking for a site to locate south of the river. Staff had identified this as a potential site, and the applicant has been working with the city ever since to purchase the property. The concept, this concept has been reviewed by the Economic Development Commission and the City Council, the EDA, as part of the purchase for the property, and the applicant was able to close on that property back in October of this year. The next item that I want to go over with the commission is related to one of the PUD aspects of the site that is being requested. What the applicant is showing is in this area of the project, which is primarily the phase two area, using this area to be able to stockpile the bad soils from the site. Basically, they would excavate the poor soils, stockpile it back in this location closer to that south lot line, and then mix good soil with that peat and bad soil, and then be able to sell that over time. What the, what we have talked about with the applicant is, since this area is already wooded, we know that they do need to make removals in order to install the, the retaining wall. As I said, it's a very large retaining wall. That's going to take grading work, actually, on both the applicant's property and the city property to be able to complete that, and with that, the applicant is proposing to leave a part of this area to the north, to leave the woods in place until phase two or until this stockpiling of dirt is no longer needed. They don't anticipate that it will need, you know, 10 years, but because we have used a 10-year timeframe for other similar operations in the Minnesota River Quadrant, we chose that. That came from a staff standpoint, and we're recommending that be allowed for a period of 10 years. And then the existing wooded area closer to Cliff would be used to screen that stockpile We've talked about generally where the storage yard is going to be in the center part of the project. Phase one includes an 8,000-square-foot building. Phase two in the future would be a 12,000-square-foot building. The specifications, the floor plan, what exactly the uses would be of the phase two building have not been determined at this time, but the applicant proposes to have a building similar to this phase one building that we will go over. It's a, it will be a little bit larger in size, an additional 4,000 square feet, and they're requesting approval for that second building along with this PUD approval tonight. And with that, there is a condition that's identified. We have done this before, to allow more than one building on a property, but we did include a condition specifying that in the event that the future building comes in, say if this property changes hands, or, you know, things change at some point in the future, if there is a change according to our Development Review Committee in the exterior materials or the building that we believe is not consistent with this phase one building, that at that point, that we'd need to come in for a PUD amendment. However, if they are able to come in using these materials and the footprint stays the same, that they would not have to come in for a PUD amendment at that time. So that is one of the, the first conditions that we've identified. We talked a little bit about the soil remediation. That is a second condition, that we, the city would allow the soil remediation and stockpiling on the eastern part of the site for a period not to exceed 10 years, provided the existing trees remain in place to the north to provide required screening of that stockpile area. The subject site does have the one wetland that I identified. That project has gone through the Parks and Natural Resources Commission. They have recommended the wetland replacement plan, which calls for the basically filling of that existing wetland, then the applicant will buy wetland bank credits to satisfy the replacement, the two-to-one replacement value, and that plan will be heading to the City Council for their consideration next Tuesday evening, hopefully with this application being on the agenda as well. Another condition that we have recommended is to require that all wetland approvals and permits be obtained prior to issuing a building permit for phase one building. As far as the building materials and architecture, we do have samples of the exterior materials that are on the far wall. There are a number of different materials that are proposed, and I believe they will try to, there you go, that comes up on the screen. The commissioner is able to see those? All right. The, I want to make clear that the colors shown on the elevation drawing are, the gray colors really are not going to be gray. These areas are actually going to be on the materials boards. The C2, the kind of, it's a very light-colored, kind of a gravel-type texture cement block is going to be used for the base elevation. That would be shown on their side elevation and north elevation on the bottom part of the building. Then the black metal panel is what is shown in the area where the entrance to the building is, and that's an accent-type material. The wall material facing west, which is facing toward River Ridge Boulevard, is proposed to be a white metal panel. And then the other exterior materials are the upper, the concrete panel, which has that more smooth texture. They are proposing a green, tinted green glass throughout the building to be used in the windows, and then along the bottom of the building on their west front elevation, and then it also shows up on the north side elevation as well. The applicant has designed a building to be more of a sleek, modern-type look of a building. They are proposing along the very top to use a green metal cap flashing. Again, their colors are the green and white, so those are the colors that are proposed for the building. The building plans do satisfy the conditions of the ordinance, and in fact, they provide four out of seven of the architectural elements, where three elements at minimum are required. They are also proposing a metal screen that will stand or stick out from the building about four feet, which is shown on the front or west elevation, and then in addition to that, over the entry doors will be a canopy. The applicant is requesting to utilize metal panel material, and the ordinance, when this was put together some years ago, when kind of metal panels were first starting to be used, the ordinance was written to have a 25% limit on metal panels for each facade of a building. In this case, the south, excuse me, let me get this correct here, so I'm sure, on the north elevation, those are, no, I'm sorry. Let me try it again. I'm thinking a little bit backwards. They're proposing on the west front facade, and that would be facing River Ridge, 70% metal panels and accent materials on that side, and then on the south facade, they're proposing 26% as opposed to the 25% standard. Staff believes that they have done a nice job in the use of various materials on the building, and we are supportive of the deviation that is requested. In terms of parking and loading, the applicant does provide the required number of parking stalls they need, the ordinance, for the parking area along Building One. They also meet the requirements for loading dock areas. As showed on this plan, there are actually three loading bays that are proposed on the building, two on the back of the building or that part of the building facing east, and then one on the south side of the building. So there are three, the ordinance requires one. They do have sufficient area beyond that to provide for the 10-by-25-foot loading space on this building, and so they do meet the ordinance in terms of both of those standards. For Building Two, because it has not yet been designed, we do not know what the amount of parking is going to be, and also the number of loading spaces that are required will be determined based on the use, so we've added a condition to, including that when the phase two building comes in for permitting, that they do need to provide and show that they provide sufficient parking and loading areas to meet the ordinance. For tree preservation, as I indicated on the very first slide, the entire site is wooded for that. We're talking about cotton and box elder trees, for the most part, on the property. The, the applicant is proposing to remove 78%, yeah, 78% of the existing tree cover as part of the project. In the I-1 zoning district, you can remove 60% before any tree replacement is required, so there is some tree replacement that's needed on this. It would be, tree replacement needs to be done at 1.5 trees for every one removed above that 60% threshold. They are proposing in their landscape plan substantial landscaping and screening on the property. Most of the, most of the new trees will be planted along a berm that's proposed along Cliff River Road. This berm is about eight feet tall at its highest location, and then it comes down to about six feet tall in front of the exterior storage area, down to about four feet on the eastern side, excuse me, the western end. And then on top of that berm is proposed substantial trees and landscaping. The trees that they are proposing exceed the ordinance standard, which is a six-foot tall tree. They are proposing trees between six feet and up to 25 feet throughout the development. There are also some trees that are proposed internal to the, the parking area and around the building, but by far, the majority of the trees are shown on that, on top of that landscape berm. The tree replacement, or excuse me, the value of the landscape plan is over $73,000. The tree replacement for phase one is $16,500, so they far exceed that, so there is not a woodland replacement that would be required with phase one. For phase two, the tree replacement value has not been determined yet. That will be determined in the future, and then we will add on. We have the inventory for what's out there, so we will look at that. We've added a condition requiring a separate tree removal permit and woodland evaluation for phase two. In terms of the landscape plan, we've talked a little bit about the berm that's proposed. I've got, this drawing shows what the berm will look like with the plantings closest to Cliff Road, and then on top of the berm, there's also a six-foot-tall chain-link fence that's proposed, kind of on the other side of the landscaping on the berm, and this is proposed for security purposes. They do need a deviation from the ordinance because this is a, a six-foot-tall fence, and it's in the front yard. Our ordinance just says that any fences in the front yard cannot exceed three and a half feet, so they are requesting a deviation for that. Staff is supportive of that because this is for, it's basically on the backside of the berm. It will not, for the most part, be visible, and it's a security fence that's required for the outdoor storage area. This is something very similar to what's allowed in other applications. On this top plan, you can see there is a, an individual, this is someone at approximately six feet tall on the other side of Cliff Road, and what they would view, so they're viewing about midpoint on the berm, and this just is, again, demonstrating that everything really behind the berm is, is going to be screened by the berm and also the proposed As far as the ordinance standards and green space, the overall green space for the site is required to be 25%, and including both phase one and two, they're looking at 28% overall green space, which is above and beyond our ordinance standard. They are required to have 3% green space within the parking lot, and they are proposing, again, with phase one and two, it'll be 5% or possibly more, just depending on how phase two turns out. So again, the amount of green space that's proposed is exceeding the ordinance requirement, and in addition to that, the size of the plant materials of the trees, the height of the trees, also far exceeds the six-foot standard. The entire site will be irrigated, so these plants and materials are expected to live, and this will be really a very nice, very nice-looking property once the, once the landscaping is installed. One of the aspects of green space that we look at is green space around the perimeter of the building, and that is supposed to be 50% green space. In the case of Building One, they do have green space that's proposed here. It's hard to see, but there's additional planting bed in this location, and overall, they have got 36% of the lineal feet of the building is proposed to be landscaped, so they're asking for a deviation to have less than the 50%. And in this case, staff is supportive of the deviation that's requested, primarily because this area of the lot, there really is a small area to work with, and the depth is such that they're really not able to exchange, to trade, moving the sidewalk over and having the landscaping along the building front. There is landscaping that's proposed along the perimeter of the sidewalk. However, you've got relatively steep hill that starts falling off in this location in order to construct the stormwater management pond. So in this case, staff is supportive of the deviation for all intents and purposes because this building is going to be elevated so far above the street level of River Ridge and Cliff Road. People will be, when you're driving or walking, you'll be looking up at the site, and you're not going to notice that that material is this side of the sidewalk as opposed to right up to the fence. It will be, not be that visible, if at all, excuse me. In the case of Building Two, there is In the case of Building Two, there is actually zero perimeter landscaping that's proposed. And in this case, we do have green area that's on the other side of the sidewalk, and so there is additional room, from a staff perspective, where they could meet the, the perimeter landscape standard. So we are recommending that they do provide the 50% landscaping for Building Two. In terms of screening, we've talked about screening the, this area of the site for the exterior storage area. That area is proposed to be blacktop, so it will be surfaced, and they're looking at storage for their landscape business, which includes the fleet trucks, some of the equipment, landscaping materials, that type of thing, to be stored within the exterior storage area. There is a, another aspect of the screening is related to rooftop screening. And at this point, they do have the general layout for the floor plan of the building and how the building is going to be constructed. They do know that they will be needing HVAC equipment, but they do not yet have the specification for the size of that equipment or where exactly it will be located on the building. So they are requesting to, her staff has recommended a condition that, before a building permit is issued for Building One, that then you need to demonstrate that they meet the rooftop screening standard. And that would be that there needs to be something physical, a physical architectural element, like a parapet or some other physical architectural treatment to screen that land, or excuse me, that rooftop equipment. Staff is, again, supportive of that deviation at this point in time because, again, people will be looking up at the building, and we don't feel that there is going to be much that you can see beyond that in terms of view. The applicant is aware that they do have to meet that requirement, and they're willing to do so. They just don't have the specifics of the, the size of equipment or where exactly it will be located to provide that upfront. We have recommended a condition that they do provide plans showing how they address the rooftop screening requirement prior to issuing a building permit. Another item that the ordinance discusses that we usually have more information on is regarding to the trash handling equipment. And in the business districts, where we have traditionally done most of our applications, there's a requirement for actually a trash enclosure building and for that to have a roof on it. That's not the case for the industrial district. The only requirement when you're in an industrial district is that the trash handling area is screened 100% from view from public streets. So we've asked that the applicant and added a condition that they show us where the trash handling will be and that it does meet that screening requirement. In terms of signage for the building, there is really a small amount of signage that's The applicant is proposing to install a small 24-square-foot freestanding sign, basically showing green horizons. This will be six feet tall and is located in this area of the site, just to the south, or excuse me, to the north of the access to the, to the site. In addition to that, they are showing two other small wall signs, one that's located on this north side elevation, and then another that will be located on the canopy over the entrance to the facility. For signage, they can have up to 432 square feet for this particular site, for this building, and they are proposing 94 square feet. So they are well within the, the requirements or the ordinance standards. Staff has added a condition requiring that separate permits be provided before installation of exterior signs, and then also indicating that for the wall signs, for a logo sign, we've had this come up in, in other applications, the ordinance doesn't allow cabinet signs for, for projects, especially if they have text on them. So we've added a condition that the sign does need to be modified to meet the ordinance. In terms of overall lighting for the project, they do meet the photometric requirements. They provided information for that. They are proposing two types of lighting, basically 10 of the pole lights. There will be LED fixtures, and then also wall light fixtures, I believe there are 15 of these, which, again, are LED fixtures. They do meet the city's requirements for being hooded, and, and they, the photometrics do also meet the ordinance's requirements. Where a deviation is requested is that the, the pole-mounted lights, especially along the vicinity in this area, just to the north of where the exterior storage area is, they're proposed to be 30 feet in height, and the other, the other pole-mounted fixtures are supposed to, are proposed to be 25 feet in height. The ordinance considers light fixtures to be accessory structures, and there's a general standard that the accessory, accessory structures can't be taller than the principal building. In this case, the building is proposed to be 24 feet in height. So they are asking for deviations, and staff is supportive of those. It's an industrial area. We don't have any residential across the street or adjacent to the facility. And really, the, for most people driving by, we don't feel that it will be even perceptible that they're taller, just because it's, again, located on a hill, and it's something that's requested and very common for security to provide the lighting. So staff is recommending approval of that. Now we get to the engineering conditions. Mr. Hillgardner, no. Basically, what we've talked about is generally the overall site layout. One of the major features is going to be the retaining wall that's proposed along the south side of the site. Located pretty much in this area. The height of the retaining wall is a little bit over 18 feet at its highest point, which is in this area of the site, and then it scales down as it moves down along the property. There will need to be grading on both the city's lot and the applicant's lot because the retaining wall is proposed along the lot line. The city is, we're amenable, and that is something that the city engineer has identified that they're okay with. But to do that, there are a couple of items that we want to make sure stay in place. And that would be as the water drains downhill or downslope to the property. Right now, there is a drainage, drainage swale in place. I believe that where the drainage on the city's lot goes out towards River Ridge Road, and we just added a condition to require that once the wall is complete and they're doing the restoration work, that that drainage continue to be the same after as it is before. The other item is that there is a platted drainage and utility easement along the south lot line, and in order to have the retaining wall located within that, there does need to be an encroachment agreement. So a condition is included, requiring an encroachment agreement. Another item related to, to utilities and easements is that this graphic identifies where there's an existing very large drainage and utility easement, and this basically covers where the overhead power lines are located. The applicant is working with Excel to relocate those lines from, like, the center of this easement over to the edge, and they will actually be burying the lines. So there will be a public hearing at the city council level to consider vacating the part of the drainage into utility easement that's shown in gray on this plan. So there is also a condition added that that vacation does need to be approved prior to commencing with building permit for the project. Let's see here. Due to the stormwater management plan, they are proposing a, an area that will be a pond, and the area that primarily is going to drain to this is a pretty small part of the site, pretty much everything from about here over to the west. In addition to the pond, they have structured the grading plan so that the majority of the site is set to be graded so that water drains in the opposite direction, and they are proposing an underground system to be able to capture that water and to be able to drain that. And Mr. Hillgardner can address that further if the commission desires to hear so. With that, there is a condition that stormwater management, all the facilities do need to meet the stormwater management plan, and that there needs to be a stormwater maintenance agreement provided by the applicant. I believe the last, the last item, the last condition, is related to fees for the project. When this property was platted, it was a city lot, and it was platted, and the, there are certain development fees associated with the property, park dedication fee, stormwater, and some other fees in the amount of $102,965. So those have been included in the, actually, in the sales agreement for the property, that those would need to be paid prior to building permit. So there is a condition requiring that as well. I think with that, that outlines all of the items that are associated with this particular application, again, for planning and development and rezoning. The recommendations include the, there are 17 conditions that I believe that I have touched on, and they are included in the back of your report. And with that, as I said, the applicant is here and can address Planning Commission, Mr. Hillgardner, and then I'll stand for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Garros, for that very thorough review of this somewhat complicated application. Because of the sheer number of conditions, real quickly, I'd kind of like to skim through a couple of things for the commissioners, and then we'll turn it back over to questions from Ms. Garros before we, we open the public hearing. I tried to categorize some of these, and 17, I think, is a record, I'm not sure. On page 10, with the conditions, they all do kind of follow into, and they fall into a few buckets. Actually, the, the conditions 13 through 17 on page 11 are all really associated with how we're phasing in the development. So it's pretty straightforward. If they were building, both buildings at the same time, everything would be covered through that PUD. We have quite a few that are very typical. The soil remediation, number one, is nothing different than what we've done in the past with other properties in the MRQ. And then you've got number two, number six, number nine, are all kind of standard things that we, that has been in front of us in the past from a sign permit or a retaining wall of that height. We've, we've had that. Number three, number four, and number 11, as Ms. Garros mentioned, are all kind of pending with the, the building permit, and that information will be coming. Basically, those are going to happen if there was going to be a variance, it would need to have come in front of us here today. And going forward, it's just noted that it'll have to meet the code or the zoning for the area. So a fair amount of conditions, but I think if you kind of look at them, and it's a very difficult development, it's a very difficult lot, there's a fair amount of things that are done to, to make this, make this application work. So I decided I'd cover that real quick to try to put this into buckets. So with that said, commissioners, I will start directing questions to Ms. Garros. Commissioner Levy, you were the first to raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions on, as a newbie here. What is I-1 versus I-2? Just for knowledge.
Yep. I-1 is the industrial park zoning district. I-2 is general industry. And the difference is the, based on the zone, there are different permitted uses and conditional uses that are allowed based on the district, and then also, some of the lot standards are different between the various zones. The way that Burnsville's ordinance works, I-2 is probably the most general industrial standard. And then as you move up, like, to this I-1, the performance standards are a little bit, there are more performance standards, and it's a, an industrial area that's allows for outdoor storage, but not the very heavy type of industrial that we've got in the Minnesota River Quadrant. Other I-2 zoned properties are, actually, they're, I believe, well, we have the, the property owner to the east, their site is zoned I-2, which I believe is kind of just a leftover from when there was more I-2 zoning. And then in the Minnesota River Quadrant, the quarry site is I-2, and then also those properties where the waste transfer station is, and the properties owned by, by Mike McGowan are all I-2. So we don't have a lot of I-2 left. A lot of that was changed when the Minnesota River Quadrant Plan was put together, and we have the Gateway Industrial and the Medium and Gateway Heavy, but that's primarily the difference. They're just divided up into zones for the purpose of applying standards and types of uses that are appropriate for those areas of the city.
And then one second question is, came up at our last meeting as well. What is a cabinet sign versus a sign?
A cabinet sign is, basically, it's a sign that has usually internally backlit, and then it's a, usually some type of material on, on the surface, usually a flat-type surface. So in a lot of communities, and in our freestanding signs in the community, you can have these cabinets. They're usually, you know, four to six inches deep, and it's just like a, like a plastic-type face or other, you know, other material, pretty much just a flat face, whereas the ordinance is trying to get away from using those and using the individual channel letters that are at least an inch deep, and it's more of an appearance-type aesthetic that Burnsville has chosen.
So the inch-deep ones would still be illuminated within them, but they're not the overall sign, just the letters?
Correct.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. Let's, let's concentrate first on retaining wall. It's, gets your attention at that height. So can you just clarify, to its location and proximity to the lot line itself? Is it right on the lot line?
Pretty much right on the lot line, yes. The lot line is all of this here, and the retaining wall is probably about two-thirds of the length of the lot. It starts in this location, comes along here, and then down to, I believe, about, yep, right to this point here.
So it's right on the lot line?
Yep.
There, there is a, sorry, devil. Commissioners, there's enough room for the wall to canter because it's a tall wall, so as that wall canter's up, the back of the wall will not go across the property line. So everything will be contained within their property.
Okay, so we get that built. Is there provisions for repairing that wall, some, somewhere down the line? Who's responsible? Do we make sure the city's protected on, on that part of it?
That's where the, the encroachment agreement comes into play. That's one of the conditions. Yes, we ask that the applicant enter into that. Also, Brian, you may want to discuss a little bit about, in this area of the site, the, we've got some utilities that are fairly close to the surface.
Yeah. Commissioners, in, in that area, there's utilities that run essentially north and south, or trunk utilities, water sewer and, and storm sewer. And in order to, to maintain adequate cover over those pipes, we don't see any freezing, they're actually going to create a kind of a bermed area, if you will, over the top of the pipes in that area. The final design will be worked out as a part of the construction plans, again, remembering this is just a part of the PUD application. But they will be providing a detailed plan at construction that shows, you know, whether they build that up or just grade, you know, down from the wall, there will be adequate cover over those pipes so that we maintain, maintain that cover.
So in summary, the encroachment agreement protects the city for future wall maintenance?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct, yes.
If I may continue?
Commissioner Thomas.
The berm itself, screening off of Cliff Road, maybe I was not paying attention, but what type of materials are going to be stored in that storage area? And what, at what height are they going to be, I mean, how high are they?
The materials that will be stored back there are landscape materials like the mulches and rock and those types of things, in addition to trucks that the applicant has for their fleet. And I believe that's it. Are there other?
Yeah, it's mostly the fleet trucks and trailers and the material bins, kind of like the city has there.
The bins, exactly. And yes, the landscaping that's proposed, the berm is going to be on the backside, probably about three to four feet, depending on where you're at along the berm, but probably about four feet above where the base of the, the two minutes will be for the storage area. And then in addition to that, they have this heavy landscaping for these trees that are anywhere from six to 25 feet tall. And the majority of the trees that are proposed are conifers, so it'll be evergreen.
So, I mean, perfect, I think that's great. As I read the plan, though, the salt edge of that storage area is at or just below the top of the berm. So that's why that screening, concentrate on that, because I think you will be able to see through there, because the elevations are not going to be that much different.
Yes.
Is it going to be, are we going to be able to make that opaque enough?
We have talked with the applicant and they do know that the requirement is 100% screening.
Okay.
And once they get out there and we see what's actually available, they probably will provide more plant materials. It may be a fence, because again, that's going to be the area that's pretty much over the city's utilities. So depending on what restrictions, but they do know that if, you know, if you can view the storage yard from that location, that they will need to be providing additional screening.
Okay, yeah, because it's, it's not a big difference in height, but, so then that leads to the last problem on screening and, well, actually, one more after this. The city's boneyard up above is going to be exposed, I mean, with a 18-foot wall over the top of, of their storage yard. Their stuff might be screened, but now we're looking at city property up above. Have we put some thought into how we're going to handle that?
We have gone through with the applicant. We do believe that actually the screening that is provided for their storage yard will also screen this site. If not, it's the city's responsibility to provide screening for our boneyard area. So we may need to do some additional screening. They will be also installing a fence, I should have mentioned, on top of the retaining wall because it is so tall for security purposes. So we may be able to look at the type of fence in there and make that solid as opposed to just a guardrail type fence.
Okay. Last screening question. So we made it a condition that they leave the trees in the soil remediation stockpile area?
Yes.
Can we quantify, I mean, is there enough trees there to screen that area or is that something we need to work out in final plans?
We can, well, we can identify it based on where their phase line is. And we do have both a tree survey showing where all of the trees are and an inventory of what all of those trees are. So yes, we can identify which trees need to be, need to stay in place until, until that soil remediation is done.
Yeah, versus the area that he needs to accomplish that.
Yes.
Which, apologize, Mr. Chair. I mean, we, we've got a pretty good handle on soils conditions, I would suppose, probably not a question for the applicant later on. I mean, what type of volume are we talking about for soil remediation?
I'll let the applicant address that for you.
Commissioner Thomas, why don't we wait and, and you can ask the question about actual outside storage on the record for the customer with the applicant and the storage when the applicant comes up?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess probably this question is from Mr. Hill Gardner. Can you explain for us a little bit more about the stormwater management? I know Ms. Garros said on one side will be a small pond and then the other side, most of the property will be, there will be an underground drain or something that would take the water to where?
Commissioners, you're correct. The west side of the site will drain into what is a traditional stormwater pond. It'll be treated at that pond location. It'll overflow and be connected into an existing storm sewer system after the treatment takes place. Similarly, on the east side of the site, it will be an underground ponding system. So it's very similar, does the same thing as your typical stormwater pond. It costs much more for the applicant, but it does save property area so that he can develop and do what he wants on the site. So they have to kind of do a balancing act as they go through the project. In fact, this did not start out this way. It started out as a traditional pond and it evolved into this. So with that, with that underground practice, it's essentially a pipe network that creates capacity for the stormwater, which creates your, your rate and volume control. So they hold back this water as it leaves the structure through a weir system, which is essentially a, a structure that has a wall that holds back the water until it gets to a certain height. We are working through some final details. Part of the new MS4 standards are to remove sediment control better than has been done in the past. That's a little bit more difficult to do unless you had some of these sediment removal structures, which are not included in the plans at this, at this point. We are looking at some sump manholes to capture some sediment, but we are working through those final details. I do believe this system will work, we just have to work out those final details. But essentially, it's the same thing as, as your typical stormwater pond, it's just more expensive because you're capturing the water within pipes and treating it there and then it goes into the existing stormwater system.
I guess the, the plus side for the, for the applicant is he will have, by the underground system will give him more area to, to what he wants to do.
Correct.
Thank you. I have questions too on the soil remediation, but I can hold on that when the applicant is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Workman, anything?
I have a question for the, for the applicant.
When he comes up, okay. Brian, I have just a quick, so the only, oh, Commissioner Levy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some years ago, I don't remember just how many, there was a water main burst on Cliff Road and I know it backdrained my water system from all the way up very close to here for a little bit. I think it was this water main they were talking about, the north-south one. There was, there was no heavy equipment being moved around above that. Now we're going to be putting heavy equipment rolling across that. And that was a fairly old line, if I recall, that's why it burst. Are we doing anything to protect that water main, the existing water main, not just building over it?
Commissioners, Commissioner Levy, that, that water main is a trunk water main. It's, it's large diameter and it's pre-stressed concrete pipe. It is very capable of handling loads on top of it. So we're not proposing, or the applicant's not proposing to do anything additional to protect that pipe. That water main break, I don't, I don't know the history on that, but it was probably due to something, you know, freeze thaw cycle or something to that effect, other than a loading over the top of it. Most, even if you get four feet of cover over that pipe, most of your loadings are diminished by the time they reach that pipe. And again, it's a very large, large diameter pre-stressed pipe. So the short answer, no, we're not, we're not doing anything, but I'm, I'm comfortable that it'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hill Gardner, I have just one question. So hence the deviation or the condition number 11 on the stormwater management. So we're still working through if the underground storage tanks need a storm scepter or something? That's probably what we're working through to, to collect the sediment?
Correct, that, that's exactly right. We, as far as volume control goes and things of that nature, everything, all the calculations that have been submitted have been approved. Our final step is to just make sure that the total suspended solids or sediment removal is, is handled. And that's very easily done by the addition of, of a storm scepter type structure. So we'll just work through the final details, but I'm, I'm very comfortable that the system that's in place will work.
Okay. I think we did an excellent job of tucking it underneath the berm. That's a great use of that space. Okay, at that point, I think if we're done asking questions, I would like to ask the applicant to come up and give us your name and address for the record. The commissioners will have a few questions for you before we hold the public hearing. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners and staff. It's been, first of all, I'll say it's been nice working with your staff. You guys have a good, great staff to work with.
They're great staff.
Yeah. This is my first time doing a development, so, and I chose a pretty interesting one. So.
We do thank you for choosing to come to Burnsville, we appreciate that.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Certainly. My name is Chris Beutz, that's B-E-U-T-Z. And my address, my home address, is that what you're looking for, is 5324 Kellogg Avenue, Edina, Minnesota, 55424.
Thank you.
So I can start with some of your questions?
If you want. We can actually, what I'll do is I'll have the commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Thomas, I think. You had specific questions for the applicant?
About soil redemption, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
The volume and the area that you will require to, to accomplish that.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So the site has some poor soils in it that are not suitable for building that need to be removed. Inherently have some peat in there. There's a, a good layer of peat throughout the site. There's been some geotech borings taken and that type of thing. So certainly where the front, where the building is, that has to be really, you know, engineered and taken care of completely. Right now, our plan is to excavate those soils and move them to the far east of the property like Deb had explained to you. In the parking area, the kind of the storage yard area, that's still not 100% how much is going to get excavated there. We're going to use some of that for the berm, so some of those soils will get moved there. But then we are going to have excess soils that are going to be moved to the back. And on the tree side, like Deb had explained, we're going to keep that on the cliff side and kind of wrapping around the corner toward the neighbor too on the far east side too as a screen. There's some good woods there. If you go by there, that's there. So that would be where the, the pile of soil would be stored. Exactly, you know, how tall that's going to be, I'm not sure, but I think it's going to be fairly tall. I don't think that would be, you know, in the winter, I think you could see it through the trees, but in the summertime, it's pretty heavy foliage there. So I think it should be screened those other seasons when there are leaves.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
No, I think the same question.
Did you answer all your questions?
Yes. Actually, it might be difficult for, if you can tell us approximately what, how many square feet or so of soil you have to do remediation for?
I, I don't, I might have to ask the engineer for that, I don't know the exact number.
What I was trying to get is amount of soil that will be stored. And I think Commissioner Thomas addressed that.
Yeah, well, it's going to be, you know, so if you look at the front area to the west of those three city pipes, that area's going to be heavily excavated down. And so you can imagine taking out anywhere from eight to 15 feet of soil there and move all, and so, and that's going to be planned to be moved all the way to the other end past phase one. So, you know, you know, so I would say, you know, it's going to have some good, it's going to be a big pile. I don't know the exact square yardage or on that part of it.
Thank you, that's good enough for me.
Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Beutz.
Beutz, yeah, thanks.
Can you just give me a quick idea of the storage yard? Are we talking about like a patio town type layout? I mean, is this open to the public or is this specifically for employees?
That's a good question. It's not like a patio town thing, it's not open for retail for public or anything like that. So it'd be mostly for our equipment, vehicles, and our material storage.
Okay, and then the, I mean, obviously, things can change, but I mean, there's going to be some order to the storage yard, I would assume. So anything that we could see past the screening, we're not seeing a parking lot or disarray back there?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. We've worked with the city quite a bit with that, with the screening, because in my understanding, it's 100% screening. Both the city wants it and we want it, because, you know, we want to be able to have our, we don't want to be, we want it to be a benefit to the city, right? So I would say you're not going to be seeing, it's 100% screening.
Okay.
So I would rest your fears on that. Between the berm and the, all the landscaping, it's going to be really thick there, multiple layers of trees, evergreens and that type of thing. So you shouldn't, you should not see our equipment at all or our vehicles. And, and we've kind of engineered it or designed it with the landscape architect to be able to have a bigger truck back there that won't be seen and that type of thing.
Okay.
Commissioner Workman, what's got, the picture that, that Ms. Garros has, there's two, I noticed on the blueprints, there's, Deb, can you kind of point out the screening on both sides of the gates? There'll be a, a gate, right? That's going to be landscaping in the middle and then if I'm correct, there's going to be a gate on the north side and the south side of that screening. And also in phase two, there'll be screening and gates on the east and the western edge of the storage lot. I did have to blow up the blueprints to be able to see that.
And the building itself isn't, there's no public access to that building either. This is strictly at employee headquarters?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, that was my only.
Good, thank you very much. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
I appreciate your time.
I, I, maybe just one comment, I don't know. Steve's my engineer and you guys were talking about the ponding a little bit. Steve, did you want to talk to him at all about that? I know you talked to me about the sediment gathering, he might, I know he had, I kind of had some of the same questions. He might, I know you guys have brought that up a couple of times, so.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Steve Gabauer, 917 Chippewa Avenue in Mendota Heights, Minnesota. I just kind of, I'd like to have a formal question, what you're looking for regarding sediments from where ponding that did come up.
Just, I want you to give the commissioner a real quick understanding. The property's kind of divided into two, if I understand it, from the utility easements to the east, and I'm kind of looking for Brian to shake his head. It's, is all going into the stormwater pond. And from the easements, I'm sorry, from the easements to the west towards Walmart, it's going into the pond and to the east. I do think the underground storage tanks, if I correctly remember the background information, those were engineered to handle phase one and phase two, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
So those, the underground tanks, if there's overflow, that's what then goes, the storm scepter would go prior to going into the city storm sewer?
Right, yeah, thanks, commissioners. The site naturally has a drainage break, grade break right at that easement line, so that's kind of kept that natural grade break there. So the building and the west portion with the, with the parking lot does go into that stormwater pond. Couple of catch basins in the parking lot take that area and drain it into the pond. And there'll be gutters and downspouts that'll come off of the building and into that pond. And that does go into the existing trunk line that goes through the easement. The west side, mostly overland drainage that gets collected in, I think, what, three or four catch basins within the storage yard. And that ultimately goes down and into the underground storm sewer system, the piping system. They are 40-inch, 48-inch diameter pipes, and I believe there's five of them, and they're, I think about 19 or 20, 20-foot-long segments of pipe in each row. So it's a fairly large system. And I did provide a stub for phase two to come into one of the rows. The first row that all of the sediment or the drainage comes into is a sediment row, a filtering row, that allows for sediment to be captured and filtered out. And as Brian mentioned, there is a sump manhole that's provided to access for cleaning and pumping that material out in the future. And we'll continue to work together with any changes that do occur. Phase two for development, I have provided calculations for up to 85% impervious coverage in my calculations. City staff will review and all of those calculations and the impervious coverage nature, but that's what has been provided, my calculations to date. So that is correct, that phase one and phase two is handled with the system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, would the, would the stormwater plan would require then periodic maintenance to have those storm scepters cleaned out?
Correct, and that, that will be accomplished with the stormwater maintenance agreement. So those, those, all those agreements, the city engineer monitors and adjusts accordingly for appropriate maintenance.
Commissioner Levy, you have a question?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. On the same way, then, you've got these large piles of remediated soil off to the east side. We've had this extraordinarily wet fall. I'm concerned that we're going to get a lot of drainage of this soil material to be gathered. Is it a regular, time-based cleaning out of the sediment? Or is it as needed that someone's going to go, oh, it's full now, and we've got to take care of it?
Commissioner Levy, typically, that is a, something that's monitored, it's not necessarily based on time. If, you know, if, if the city began to experience a lot of sediment or things, or some backups within the systems, some flooding that would occur, we would have to take a look at that maintenance. I would venture to guess that within the site itself, with, with some of the new things that are available with the biologs and things like that, that can, that can hold the sediment, I would think that they're, you know, would be planning to protect any of those sediment piles and mulch piles. Or they will be spending a lot of money on, on maintenance, so I would think that that's a part of their plan.
That, that peat and that mulch is an asset they need to protect. There'll be stuff stopping it from going down the stormwater.
Thank you.
Any other question, commissioners, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions prior to the public hearing? Okay, this does require a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that has any questions to, please step up to the podium and give us your thoughts. If you could start with your name and, and address. My understanding is you're a neighbor, so you can, probably, why don't you give us the address of your, the next door property?
Oh, thank you commissioners, good, good evening. It's, my name is William Bernard, I'm not the owner, I'm the lawyer for the owner. So the owner is Rivers Edge Partners, LOP. That owner, Stuart Bell, has been involved in that property since the very beginning. If the, a lot of the council members, I'm sorry, the planning commissioner, members may know that the property legal description is Valentine Edition, and Stuart and Mike Valentine actually developed that property. I've been involved as the lawyer for Stuart Bell and those entities that have been operating out of that business. Currently, Market Distributing is a company that's just starting this month to run a distribution company out of that property. So I came to introduce myself to the neighbor, and I was able to talk to Ms. Garros this afternoon on the phone, plus review everything that's been available on, through the internet. The, really, nothing's going to impact Rivers Edge until Phase Two begins. We're comfortable with the measures that the planning, that's in front of you regarding any approval needs to be with Rivers Edge prior to the construction or improvement of Phase Two. And that's really the, the point of my phone call to Ms. Garros this afternoon, is because they're going to be using our access, that is, to the east of Phase Two. All the traffic will be from Rivers Edge Boulevard, and as the members know, the Cliff Road gets narrow right before the building that my, that I, you know, Mr. Bell's property. So, you know, in the ideal world, it would have been a five lane road all the way down to Walmart and to the crossing of the railroad. It becomes four lanes. And so the precautions that we have taken over the years, because 18 wheelers are driving around the Trudeau building and making deliveries, oftentimes, there'll be two or three 18 wheelers waiting to pick up a delivery for the food distribution. So we've made it a one-way around the back of the building. There's a lot of talk about the elevation involved, I mean, we similarly have a 25, 30 foot wall, you know, just to allow the access. And years ago, there was contemplation of even buying part of this building, I'm sorry, part of this property. But that would have forced our building to become just too long, that it was impractical. But it gives you maybe a little perspective as to what the property looks like. So, in Phase Two, there won't be any access from Cliff Road except over the Rivers Edge property, exactly. And right now, we've never had problems with our snow removal, it's done to the front of the property. The only potential problem could be similar to this morning with the foul weather turning south off of Cliff Road if there are 18 wheelers that get stacked up as they're waiting for their deliveries to the back of the building. I'm just providing this as information. We don't know when Phase Two will be involved, and all of the traffic is going to be off River Ridge Boulevard for this proposal. So we're comfortable, I'm not here to complain again, to introduce ourselves, and, and we plan to, you know, keep in touch with Ms. Garros. If there are any questions regarding the history or any other insight, I could be happy to answer questions.
No, Mr. Bernard, in the background, if you noticed, condition number 17 is kind of all about you.
That is true.
Prior to the issuance of a building permit, for Building Two, written documentation shall be provided, that there was a recorded cross-access easement, and the city has worked with many people from a standpoint of executing one of those cross-access agreements in the past.
Yeah, and I think, I agree complete with that. I think what will be the issue there is what's the proposal for that building? And so we, we plan to address that in the future.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
No problem.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing no one?
I haven't heard the question based on what I've just heard. Why is that east, north, I guess with northeast entrance needed as opposed to going through the Phase One, Phase Two property?
Commissioner Levy, let me finish closing the public hearing and take any other, and then I will allow you to ask Ms. Garros that question. Okay? If there's, I see no one else needing to step up, so at this time, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioner Levy, I will allow you to address that question to Ms. Garros.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Garros?
Yes.
Why is the traffic net all through their property as opposed to the other end?
Primarily because this is going to be a gated, a gated area, both secured both on the east and west for their outdoor storage yard, which they have indicated. And what we had discussed with the applicant is that we know that the county is not going to allow any additional accesses onto Cliff Road. So, the only way would be if they were able to work with the property owner to the east to allow them to access their existing drive. And the county may allow this existing access to be widened, but we know that there will not be a second access. Other than that, I would turn it over to the applicant to talk a little bit about what they anticipate or what they see for that future building.
Because gating just says to me, there's a gate, you can open the gate, you can drive through. I don't understand why traffic can't come in from River Ridge and go through to Phase Two.
If you notice, the parking in the front of the building is right by the building there, so when we thought of that extra development of that building, it seemed to make a lot more sense to be able to have that access. Of course, we'd have to get the egress from the neighbor and work out some of the details, which I'm glad he kind of brought up, because I understand, I watched the traffic there too, so widening it would be nice, but, so that would be the future thing. We'd ideally be able to use that access, that'd be helpful for that building, to have a second access. Be the main reason, it'd be, it'd be more optimum. That, like Deb had mentioned, that's, that storage lot might be fenced off in the back. We don't know if that's going to be shared necessarily between the whole property down the road. So it seems to, long-term, it would be, makes sense, it'd be better for the property to have a second outlet like that.
So, does that mean that Phase Two might not be a part of a landscaping company?
It's for either growth of our company or future development.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions this evening? Seeing that, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, it's my honor to move that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the rezoning and concept and development stage, PUD, for a new landscape business subject to the following conditions. We have number 17 conditions as presented by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Do I hear, do I have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Excuse me. This will go in front of the city council next Tuesday, December 22nd. And I appreciate, I wanted to say, I think this is a great use of the property. I think you're building a very nice building, excuse me. And we're excited to have your business in Burnsville. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one comment too. I was very impressed with the landscaping of this property, proposed landscaping, with trees, the screening, the fencing, the berm. I think, you know, you've done a very good job in your presentation to staff, and I must congratulate you for doing that and for making Burnsville your home for your business. You couldn't have chosen a better city.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
That moves, we will now move to the fourth item on this evening's agenda. And that is the discussion of the Planning Commission 2016 work plan. And Ms. Garros, since we're not going to put Regina on the spot this evening, I guess we will, we will have you do the presentation. I'll put her on the spot next meeting.
Thank you commissioners, and thank you for Regina, because we really want her to stay.
Yeah.
The item is a discussion item, and every year, the planning commission, as well as the other boards and commissions for the city, develop a work plan for the things that they would like to either research or have special studies or work on for the next year. And then the work plan gets presented to the city council by the chair of the commission, so Mr. Bradrick will be making the presentation next week to the city council. And they consider all of the work plans for the commissions and any new items as part of their January all-day retreat, and then can provide, you know, additional guidance or feedback based on that. As far as the 2015 work plan, that was provided in your packet, and we have completed several of the items. A couple of the items, we've done research, but they have not yet been presented back to the planning commission. We did complete, it was actually a smaller project than we thought, the surface water management plan is part of the city's comprehensive plan, and that is primarily reviewed by the Parks and Natural Resources Commission and worked on with our natural resources staff. There was some minor changes that needed to be made in that, which did not actually impact or have any impact on the, the land use plan component of the comprehensive plan or any changes in zoning. So, that minor amendment actually did not come before planning commission because it ultimately was not needed. We do know that actually, the update, the major update for that plan, and then also the wetland management plan have already started. And those, again, will be reviewed primarily through Parks and Natural Resources Commission, but the drafts of those will be coming to the planning commission when they are available. Hopefully, by the end of next year, the comprehensive plan process is two years, it'll be 2016 and 2017. The staff is in the process of hiring or sending out RFPs for planning consultants to help us with that. Once we have a consultant on board, we'll be bringing the work plan back to planning commission for you to view and take a look at and have input on as to what particular steps we are proposing. So for the minor amendment, there was really nothing that was needed on that. For the wellhead protection plan, all the commissioners, I believe, were, were here when we were working on that. That was a huge project and ordinance, so that was completed in 2015. The solar energy ordinance, we had a number of work sessions with the planning commission and city council. We do have a draft of that ordinance ready and anticipate bringing that back to the planning commission in January and moving from, from that. There are, there was some research that was done by our intern Cedric when he was here on performance standards for conditional uses in the R1 district. And that really was something that was brought up by a former commissioner, but staff felt that it made sense to take a look at it. In the R1 zone, there are a number of uses that are a lot bigger and higher use types of land uses that are allowed, like churches, schools, the high school, maybe public improvements, public projects and buildings. They're all uses that are allowed in the R1 district, but there really aren't performance standards or criteria that address those. So, we are evaluating these projects, like the high school this past year, based on our single-family standards, you know, setback of 30 feet for the front yard, and, you know, the standards are really written for single-family homes as opposed to these other uses. So Cedric did do some background research. We need to do some further research before we bring that back to the commission, and we anticipate doing that in 2016. The next, or the last item that was on your 2015 plan related to monument signs and studying those, this really came up as a result of Berger Jones, that project, the Aurora Center over there. There have been two or three monument signs requested for that shopping center since Berger Jones has gone in. And the ordinance really doesn't have any standards other than, they can't be taller than six feet, and they need to be a monument-type sign and, and a setback. But there's nothing that talks about, should there be a, a distance, you know, between the signs, should there be a limit on the number of signs, that type of thing. So that is what is to be studied, and we did not get to working on that this year, so we have added that to the draft 2016 plan. Also, over the year, if things come up and the commissioners identify, you know, that's something that is kind of an issue, we'd like to study that, we keep a running list of those topics, and that information has been provided in your background report. They include some of the other things. In-home daycare was brought up, I believe by Chair Bradrick. What are the, what is the city's authority, you know, how do we regulate those or can we regulate those? That's an item. The 50% building perimeter landscape, that is something that Chris Lanier had been working on or taking a look at, because we have so many PUD applications asking for deviations to that standard. The idea was to take a look at that, is that appropriate for today? Should we look at changing or modifying that? That is an item that has been up for discussion. For the sign ordinance, a couple of other items, one relating to outdoor special events. This is kind of a quirky thing, where the only place that special events are discussed is in the sign ordinance, and there's a, there's a standard for how much signage you can have for these. This would be things like if somebody wanted to have a concert outside of their restaurant, you know, a small concert or something with a tent, you know, maybe a picnic or, or something of that sort. These are special events, and they don't, we don't have anything that addresses what really needs to be done with these, in that they all require a review by the police department for access and security. They require review by our inspections department if there are the use of any electric conduit or electric type, anything basically, including- if there are the use of any electric conduit or electric type, anything basically, including electric, to make sure that that meets it. And then also, our fire department gets involved. So we had put this on. This is something that was actually forwarded from our protective inspections department, because of course, they get, they get the applications and are looking for guidance. So this is what that item is. The amendment for legacy events. What this is, is this is related to, a legacy event is a major community event, which Mr. Bradrick is, is familiar with. Fire muster is, is one of them.
International D.
Yep. So.
That's the other one, I'm sorry.
International.
International.
Are the two legacy events the city has.
Yep. So again, the ordinance doesn't contain much information about these. There are things that have been proposed in previous years, which usually we find out about them about two days before the event, and then have to say, you know, the ordinance doesn't allow it or, or it does, but you need to do these types of things. So this is, again, I think, providing more clarification on, and trying to make sure that the types of activities associated with the events are addressed where appropriate in the, in the zoning ordinance. The last item is something that is, has been brought up by Skip Neenhouse, our community development coordinator, and that is, is that we have goals and objectives to try to attract STEM businesses. Those are associated with science, technology, health, engineering, and mathematics.
Education.
Education. Thank you. If I only looked at the screen, it's all there. So kind of the idea here is, again, to take a look at the various uses that we have, and since we're trying to encourage these uses, number one, are they allowed in the ordinance? And then number two, are there things that we can do to further encourage and maybe remove any types of roadblocks in the way for some of these types of uses? So that's a general discussion item that's on there. As far as the 2016 plan, it's your plan. So what we have done is just provided a draft with the items that, again, we've discussed in the past, the things that haven't been completed, and are looking for discussion and input from the commissioners as to what you would like to see on this work plan so that it can be provided to City Council with that.
Ms. Garros, you did, the last item on our list is the updated comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And so that's a pretty monumental task for the next couple of years. So that, that's going to take a tremendous amount of both staff and, and support time.
The planning commission will be the primary, the primary group that is responsible for shepherding through and developing the comprehensive plan. So you'll be involved in, in a lot of meetings, probably more than just the standard two meetings a month.
Commissioners, what questions do you have for Ms. Garros before we talk about additions or subtractions to the list? Commissioner Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I like the list. I think, I don't know if it's a problematic issue, but it's certainly a frequent issue.
The 50 percent?
The 50 percent. And it did get carried over to the 2016 plan. I guess, if we see it as being problematic, I guess it should be on the list.
Well, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I did put it on there. Well, put it on there.
Okay. That would be the, Ms. Garros, that would be my only suggestion is we add that, because we've dealt with that.
Yes.
A lot.
That was an omission.
I know we've dealt with it with Chick-fil-A and with Starbucks and, so that would be my only suggestion from an addition. And I do realize that's a pretty daunting list, but there's a couple of things that the background has been done. The solar energy is done. We just need to bring it in front of us.
Yes.
And most of the research for the, the R1 standards. But I would tell you that we've dealt with that far less than we have the, the 50 percent landscaping.
Yes.
So depending on how you would want to maybe flip-flop one of them until fourth quarter and then try to deal with the landscaping piece a little quicker, I think that would be. I've heard from Commissioner Singh and Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Levy?
In your presentation, Ms. Garros, thank you, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the, the monument signs and you referenced Burger Jones. I can't picture that. Where is that? So I can think of what I was looking at.
Sure. That is on the southeast corner of County Road 42 and County Road 5. Lifetime Fitness is down there. It used to be.
Little Rainbow.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that whole kind of complex.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Workman, do you have any questions or additions to the work plan, suggestions?
I have any additions. The ordinance provisions for solar energy, is that relative to, I guess, sort of been my first commission meeting, when we were wrapping that up when I got in?
Yes, we had a number of different work sessions with Planning Commission and then with City Council, and the council did direct us to go back and to prepare an ordinance. So trying to take all of the comments and ideas from the Planning Commission and council, put them into an ordinance, and then bring that forward for your consideration.
So we'll see that next year?
Yes. Hopefully, one of the two meetings in January.
Okay.
And then there's a quick follow-up question as far as Mr. Neenhouse's push for the STEM. Is that, I mean, I guess with, the first thing that popped into my head was Lebanon Hill-type programs where we're getting nature walks and, you know, things of that nature where we're getting, I don't know how to, I guess, could we maybe define, can you just, for my own sake, define what, what we're looking for on that avenue?
Really, there is a, kind of a promotional thing. It's really statewide, actually nationwide, I think. You know, where this has kind of been one of the more recent trends to really try to work on education for students, to get them into these science and technology-type classes. And to what, what Mr. Neenhouse is talking about is taking a look at our ordinance, because his frustration coming from an economic development side is, every time something is proposed, they got to go through all these hoops in the zoning ordinance. And we also have not ever really done an evaluation of our uses to see, you know, do we have listings for the types of uses that are considered to be STEM uses? Try to include those, and then to the extent that we can, to allow them maybe as permitted uses or establish performance standards so that they don't have to go through PUD or a conditional use type of thing. And that's really what he's looking for. But things that are related to UTC, for example, is a, is a prime example. They are a company that does testing and, you know, is, they're known throughout the United States for their programs, and they have, they provide internships for students, very technical, very guarded as to what they do. But basically, they provide aeronautics and different types of standards and testing for the airline industry and others. So I guess it's moving, looking at what can we do to further attract these types of businesses, and then in that respect, also, what can we do to streamline the process so that they can develop in Burnsville with as little horsepower as possible?
Commissioner Workman, I guess I would, I would, to put it in a nutshell, what we need to try to do is look at any kind of business that's a STEM business, what are the roadblocks to them opening a business in Burnsville, and how can we get ahead of that, have it in our zoning? So we are far ahead of another community. So a, a business, whatever skip comes to us with from a standpoint of stumbling blocks, if we can, if it's reasonable, can we work through it? And a business could come in and literally locate in the city of Burnsville through an administrative process, not coming to us, versus having a, a neighboring community where they're going to require them to go through a PUD and a bunch of other stuff. So it's just a way to, to kick roadblocks out of the way, to, to make that business easier to, to locate in the city.
Keep the path of resistance to the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think once we start to, to work on this, we'll find that the framework is already there. We have science, we have technology, we have health, we have education, we have math, we have schools, we have, you know, businesses in our community that provide these kinds of services. And once we start to work on it, we find it's not that, too difficult. What we, what we, I think the overall goal is to make sure we don't have roadblocks to people who want to come in our city and have these kinds of businesses, or these kinds of, you know, institutions, the health institution, something like that. But we have, we have all of these already. We just want to make sure we have something in writing that we can look at and see that there is no roadblock.
Yes.
You know, make it easy, user-friendly for people who want to come in and do business in our, in our city. I think our big one really is the last one, the comprehensive plan, which will, will take us a lot of time in working on it to get it done. So, and I'm not sure if we can get it done, but I think we are up to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Workman, did you have any other questions?
I guess I would like to see that the STEM gets easier to come in and massage parlors get harder to come in, because I feel like those are something that we see on every block in the city.
I think the City Council's working on that in their current budget standpoint, in the standpoint of application costs.
Yes.
Commissioner Workman, anything else in reference to what we're dealing with?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, Commissioner Levy, it looks like you have one more question.
Yeah. The STEM, not every business that comes to Burnsville comes before the Planning Commission. So there are obviously guidelines and so forth. How does a STEM organization differ from a generic organization?
They don't. They're, they're just focused on those businesses, and as a community, we have a goal of trying to drive that type of business, which drives an average higher pay, which generates a, you know, a better standard of living for people. So, once again, we're not boycotting other businesses. That set of business, when they, when that type of business lands in a new community, what are their roadblocks going to be? And can we build that into our zoning ordinances upfront? So they come in, they beat with staff, they don't have to come in front of the Planning Commission, they're good to go, and they're in operating and employing people in our city far before they could get through any other process at another town.
I have no problem with that, that argument. My question is, how does a STEM organization differ from a generic business organization that comes in, sets a business? Whereas a STEM organization, unless they're planning some major, let's say, tower of, with a windmill on it, you know, I don't understand how a STEM organization would be different than any other organization.
That's what we're waiting on Mr. Neenhouse, the economic development coordinator, to bring to us with what he believes his concerns might be to attract that type of business.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we need a motion for this, do we not, to move it to the City Council?
Yes.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion to take the 2016 work plan that was presented to us in our background with the addition of the 50 percent landscaping.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Thomas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion unanimously carries.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, just to wish you well, that we, we have your back as you go before the City Council.
I will do my best, Commissioners, to not embarrass the Planning Commission for my presentation.
I'm sure you're with it.
That does take us to item five on our agenda this evening, which is updates. And Ms. Garros, do you have any updates? I do know you provided us the agenda for the January 11th meeting. This will be our last meeting for the, for the month of December. Anything else?
Just in the event that, I know some of you, we didn't get to, to meet, but just wanted to welcome Regina Dean. She is our city planner. She has taken Chris Lanier's position. Chris is still with the city, but he's moved on to another position with the IT department. And Regina comes to us from Eden Prairie, and we are ecstatic to have her here. She comes in with the ability to kind of take off running. She's worked with the Metropolitan Council, she's worked with transit-oriented development. She, they have a shopping center in Eden Prairie, so we just thought, really a great fit and very glad to have her. So I just wanted to make sure that all of you had a chance to meet Regina.
Happy to be here. Thank you all.
Welcome, Regina.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Don't believe everything Ms. Garros has said about us.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think Regina can believe me.
Okay.
That you have the best men for, to work with. From what she has said, you've already have experience doing some of this kind of thing. But working with Deb would be a pleasure. And welcome to, I'm, Mr. Chairman, since this is the last meeting of the year, we want to wish all of you, staff and commissioners, happy holidays, however you spend your holidays. Enjoy, and the best of wishes for 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, do you have any other updates?
No.
I would also like to thank you for your time this 2015, and I'm, I'm excited and looking forward to the things that will come before us in 2016. But I do appreciate all your efforts. So with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move adjourned.
Commissioner Levy has moved that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Workman has moved, has given me a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much for tuning in to the Monday, December 14th, 2015 Burnsville Planning Commission, and have a good evening. Have a safe, safe holidays.